Good evening here, good afternoon everyone. My name is Chris Dye and we're happy to be here today. I welcome everybody here and welcome for coming and being part of your state government. Before we get started though, I do want to let everybody know to please be considerate of the conference that is about to take place at the City Council meeting. Absolutely be considerate of the people who are speaking to the City Council members and to your fellow citizens and especially to myself and my fellow deputies. So that's all I have to say at this time. Oh yeah, and the folks behind us, they are gonna hold their sign. It's okay when the city attorney agrees to allow them to come in. But if they do get vocal or if there is disturbance, you could be asked to leave this meeting today, so please let me be considerate of everybody around me. Thank you.
I will, excuse me, can I have a little bit? Wow, next, you can make it to him now. Alright. This is flag, we're gonna have a press briefing. I will speak up, can I, Devon? Alright. Devon? Your order, the right order, the wrong next order. I, my allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, and every one of its parts. Could you please call, Devon? Jim? Oh, we're gonna, I'm not gonna get it. Any call, uh, three times five. Thank you. Down, follow the vote.
Can't hear, can't hear anything.
Alright, that's better. I just have to hit my list, okay. Alright, we're gonna call a vote then. Do you want to raise your favor, Linda? Yeah?
Aye.
Aye. On the consent agenda, we have both committee reports, the identity committee meetings with each other. Yeah. Uh, consent agenda has doctor days requiring a street closure. One of the few meetings are here, actually. Um, so... I second that, all votes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold business. I believe that we say that's the next regular meeting. Hold on, protocol, that's why we're here. Why is this hold business? I directed, uh, I wanted to talk about three things today. First of all, this, uh, summary. This includes the, um, discussion and possible action establishment of protocols. I didn't know if we had an opportunity, this should be passed out by our audience here. We didn't deliver this one. But now we're gonna read each other. Do you have any copies? Got copies? Copies of this? Do you have any reading? Can I have some comments? Yes, please, vote.
My name is Chris Dye, I'm a resident of Dunsmere. I would like to read an alternate text for this proposal, for this, uh, protocol. No person who addresses the council shall make any belligerent, personal, impertinent, irrelevant, redundant, slanderous, loud, threatening, abusive, or disparaging remark, statement, or commentary upon the council, staff, or other individuals in a manner which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes orderly conduct of the council meeting. Nor shall any person engage in any other disorderly conduct which so disrupts, disturbs, or impedes orderly conduct of the meeting. Any violation of this rule shall be grounds for terminating the citizen's comment, period. Continued inappropriate behavior or comment after having been directed to discontinue also shall be grounds for removal from the meeting. Council shall not be belligerent or make disparaging comments towards the speaker. Nothing in this section shall prohibit or discourage orderly criticism of any city decision or policy within the limits of these rules. Does anybody recognize that text? You recognize that text, any of you here? Ma'am. This is from the Machasta protocols. The ones that you wanna put in place later this week and you haven't even read it. You're already putting up a new protocol that is gonna go against the protocols you're gonna vote on later this week and you have not even read the Machasta protocols you plan on putting in place.
Okay, yes, Tom, thank you. You have comments on the protocols? Don't think they're unreasonable? Do you ever want to add something?
Did you guys hear my voice?
No.
No, 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 no. Well, listen.
Let me in or let me out.
You're, you're gonna have to change now.
Anyways, five, six, seven, Sacramento Avenue, let's make that.
Please use the microphone, Linda.
One thing about people that are jacked, we can speak very loudly, so almost everybody agrees, but we don't say anything at all. And except for me, this is another example of the misuse of information that they don't get. They just gross fuck out of it and expect themselves, they haven't even read it. I have videos, the video, the videos, comments, the tweets, the emails, hundred and fifty first figures right up the side of it. Why shouldn't we, Lesley? Why shouldn't we?
Just give some justice, if we don't have...
Yes, Mr. Harvey?
Hi, I'm Dale Harvey, over at 4403 Oak Street. Uh, I am curious as to what you're considering, uh, is on the agenda, and I understood it was dealing with a, uh, said the resolution does not have a name or a number on it, but it does, as I say, the title of the resolution to establish protocols of the forum, City Council meetings, commission meetings, and committee meetings. And it's, uh, item A is all council members must preserve order and before and at all times. B, and so gone, B, any member of the public desire to address the council, may secure the permission to study, office, letter, et cetera. This is the resolution we're considering adopting today?
Yes.
That's not, that's not the full, uh, the protocols that were, have been adopted by the city in our past, the previous. So there's nothing in these protocols dealing with pay for City Council members or otherwise?
Do you mean what?
For pay, compensation for City Council members? No, nothing in here, nothing is even screwed for that. Thank you.
And I got to share, so we're gonna, um, from now on, I gotta pick them to use, they're here to do a job, they're very capable of, is to, um, prevent the order, as far as it is, the necessary. How would I agree, Mr. Hicks? Uh, whether you have a nice hand as a city attorney or not, you're the human being, you're a citizen here, you've done a lot for this community that he doesn't have it. Nobody deserves to be treated that way, and they won't be. The reason I wanted this meeting, Mr. Harvey, concerns are, are before, those were some guidelines that I, I thought were more appropriate given the anger and, and, uh, aggression of the audience that I've experienced. Secondly, I wanna talk about leadership issues. And thirdly, I wanna talk about technical aspects of the city. I don't wanna be here, many of you don't want me to be here. I took civics class in high school, and I'm very proud of our country and proud of our apostles. And, um, I have no idea of this, this is so awful. It's true, some people are, um, I suppose just wicked at heart, other people are just misguided. And, um, other people are just stupid and extreme. So look at the case, um, of people who are all here, especially you, going out here at a warm afternoon, kind of Friday, because you care and you want to do what's best. I've been very, very missed, and I apologize, but I don't always hear my phone calls, and I don't always, um, get back. I've had some threats and it's been discouraging and often times I just don't look at it. There's backfire sometimes, for instance with Mr. Steele, where I didn't call it back before an important vote. Um, we're gonna adopt these, I haven't talked to Tim about any of this stuff yet, I did direct, I was just, just got the ticket, uh, so I know people wanna fight him for it, but it's pink. And, uh, we're gonna try to fashion some sort of remedy for this, uh, what I see in the leadership crisis. If nothing else, we'll have to comment on the resolution divorce, I'm gonna call a vote. What does that mean? I'm suggesting that the council should consider a flight amendment to this, because, uh, subparagraph B of C, uh, it says, "No person will make any personal attacks on a council member." I think, um, free speech rights, you know, have to be afforded, um, on that point, and also on subsection C, um, discussing the speaker shouting out a word, "We make special enforcement of persons," that means chambers shall be barred by design of superior defendants. That might also potentially violate free speech rights. And so I think that a court amendment should be added, subparagraph B, that just says, "If the application of this resolution shall not be enforced, except in such, you know, as the best, uh, free speech rights of the public." I hope that you'll pop that snow wig over there. I would say one more thing. Sure. I'm recommending to the council, for legal reasons, that a subsection D be added that states that the enforcement of this rule shall not be in such manner as it sends the free speech rights of anyone in the public. And one of the reasons, uh, it should add is, there's a big difference between people speaking during public comment, where they're obviously pretty much left to say anything they can, as long as it's not disrupting the meeting, and then during agenda item discussions, there have been personal attacks made in prior meetings against people who are completely off topic, and those are viewed as an experience to make sense of the past. So I think during agenda item discussions, there's a stronger limitation that applies, and, uh, that's why I'm recommending that we just add this up to the council vote. So I'm moving to adopt this resolution with the amendment that there'd be a express statement that we acknowledge the first three, three rights and, uh, that it's not intended, but we'd be allowed to critically review it, and how we word it, that's fine, actually. It's a given to hear that, well, the law. And you're here to spend your money, and so it's very important that we have a rapport, that we're not just, uh, you know, occasionless to this thing. We've got to be able to communicate back and forth. We do. We will. So that's out there, if you're ever, moving your eyes. Of course, however, nothing like that, come on. I'm talking about me, right, and where's the money? No, I won't, come on.
My name is Alan Hyman, I reside at City One, with the one need Beverlyway. My comment to the council, while I would like to pay attention to it, is that, like Alan Hyman, I heard you were asking the deputy who I love, and she didn't want to tell you, but I'm adding one. With these amendments and the lack of clarity of what's contained within the protocol, I think the protocol is probably a known issue, and, um, definitely need to be pursued. However, I believe the full text of the protocol should be made available to the public so that the public can review them as they are going to be finally adopted. There seems to be some, some lack of clarity as far as what's already on there, um, and the, uh, the attorney has stated that there were some areas that he was, that he thought to be improved upon. So I would like to recommend to the council that perhaps they create a more final draft presented as a future regular council meeting. Thank you.
David Edmiston, Butterfly Avenue, Dunsmere. The fact that you're addressing this on a Friday afternoon, holiday weekend, is an astounding lack of respect for your constituents. There's absolutely no reason this to be, this could be handled in a special meeting. It's just respectful, ensures an incredible, just an incredible lack of, of foresight on the other part. It's just, it's ridiculous. I have a dozen things to do tonight to prepare for the weekend, and I'm sure that most of these people do the same, and we have to address protocols and a special meeting on a holiday weekend? Who's going to do that?
That might be our gateway into our item two, the lack of meaning, which is what's making it necessary to have these special meetings over and over and over. I don't like them either. No, I didn't, I didn't call a vote, and there was no, there was a second? And, uh, councilman might can make a comment. But I didn't know that there weren't our copies made available to the audience, and by law, you're entitled to that, so... Do you have copies of this or not? There should be, there's copies here, there should be copies there, right?
The only copies, we have just posted five minutes wide, none of us got those from this morning.
And out there, there were copies sitting there in the book. I'm gonna refer to that motion, and pull it back, and look if we can have the, if we've got enough time. Very fair.
Another thing, the agenda packet is always available at City Hall on the deck, that's how we do it, every single week. We post the agenda, when you come to council meetings, you don't find the agenda packet on the podium, you just find the agenda itself. The agenda packet is always available at City Hall on the deck.
You have no chance to see what you're even talking about, nothing.
You seem to find out about it because you were...
We're not here to argue with you, if you don't have copies of this, we have ours, we can come back and give them. And here's the ridiculousness, Mr. Edmiston, this beyond as contemptible, that we don't have regular meetings. I don't wanna start picking somebody apart, but there are, I just figured out the key elements of, how many floors it is, this is kind of a dead thing right now. They have copies, and if those are gonna bind their behavior, it's very fair. So, I think you might have meaning, probably. First of all, we gotta have meetings. I'm here in chief because there's a cease and desist, and I, that I want to respond to, for each to be done in a regular meeting within three days. That would be an opportunity that I have, and I believe you definitely, at least, uh, we're gonna be regular meetings. There's, um, I don't want to see you to, you know, end up getting sued because I did something that you couldn't respond to. Not at all. And then next of all, um, you can't spend any money, the main thing we're here to do is, that's our purpose, to get out of money spent from a tactical standpoint, trying to force across the street with new things. And there's some alarming issues that I think, you know, both sides, that have led to lack of meetings. And, uh, I'm literally on my reason, guys. She was pretty, uh, bothered, even the past day. Are we in public? Uh, Mr. Dye? Of course, I'm a, don't yell at us again, please. I don't yell at you.
I'm over here talking about regular meetings, special meetings, let me state what I think is on a whole lot of people's minds, and I'll state this to the two individuals that I would like to point out to you. You are gonna be here on June 4th, no matter what. You say that this city is in a turmoil, you say that it's in crisis, you say people are angry. The reason is because of the recall election. If you want to be on the side of the people, if you wanna know what the people think, don't have another special meeting, don't have another meeting until June 5th, the next regularly scheduled meeting. If you do anything else, you are on your side and you will be remembered in November. You do not lock anything down until after the recall, and the people have a chance to let you know what we have been witnessing through the democratic process. Anything else is a travesty.
My name is David, here in Chicago, I'm here in California. I'm speaking now in my capacity, not as the city attorney, but as a resident of this city. I'm aware that the cease and desist letter was sent to the city eventually, and based on the date of that letter, that letter must be responded to by the 30th of this month. There is no general meaning set yet for the, by the 30th of this month. If that letter is not answered, the city will be involved in the exposure to litigation. I am, I am recommending to the council that they direct the city attorney to respond to that letter and agree to the, uh, intentions contained in that letter that are within the ambit of the upper ground spectrum of the council's government code. I hope you will consider doing that, because if you don't, the city could be sued. And I, I can't do it without direction from the council, thank you.
Hello?
My name is Mabel Kelby, I am one of the four individuals who wrote the first cease and desist letter based on the Brown Act violations and the use of the special meetings as a way of denying public access. We received a negative answer to that cease and desist by the council continuing to have their special meetings. Therefore, two weeks later, I amended the first cease and desist, uh, letter, and that one now allows the council to cease and desist by the fifteenth, excuse me, June 15th. In the second one, I also named Mr. Hicks as, uh, part of the amendment. Thank you. Mr. Hicks has received a copy of this, as the city clerk has received a copy of this. Mr. Andrews, the VA, has received a copy. I both hand delivered and according to law, I nailed it with the term of receipt. So he understands that the council does have additional time. I'm just at furniture, I just read the Brown Act, and I do the best I can and use my power of test, and I suggest Mr. Hicks does the same thing. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Druckley. I go down from Fort Jones, because I love this little town, it's my hometown. I grew up here in the 50s and 60s. I was in the largest graduating class, by the way, at Dunsmere High School, the largest class they ever saw. We were a class of 1960, we were the war babies. Sixty-six boys and thirty-three girls. We had fun. From that class came many doctors, professors, teachers. I would say probably fifty percent of the kids back then graduated from college, was a good school. This was a great town then, and I think it still is. I still have many friends and memories here. I still have family here, my daughter Kami and her two handsome grand, my two handsome grandsons, Brandon and Justin. I served for four years on the Dunsmere High School Board of Trustees with Mr. Pete Mitchell, who I just, I'm so happy to see sitting over here next to me. Chris Strongsmas, who also served as our wonderful city attorney. Dr. Bill Townsend. Who did I leave on? Gambling, Brian, gambling, yeah. And who? Okay, okay, it's been a, for my time, but, yeah. She was for my time, but yeah. I served for four years on that Board of Trustees. And then at the age of forty-five, I went back to school. Went back to COS with my high school diploma. And at age fifty, I graduated from college and I started my teaching career with a bachelor's in English at a teaching credential. And I just retired from twenty years of teaching. While serving on the high school board, I was required to complete sixty hours of training and boardsmanship, including extensive training in the Brown Act. I have been carefully watching the recent events with the city of Dunsborough and the city council. I believe that several members of the council are and have been violating sections of the Brown Act. The intent of the open meeting law for the Brown Act is to conduct public business in public and to allow the public to have input prior to decisions being made. And you can maybe stretch that law, but you really should not because you have a huge moral responsibility not to. So you should not be polling or meeting any time on anything that's included on that agenda before you have your meeting. Thank you.
I was still fifty-nine, fifty-one, Dunsborough Avenue. Thank you, Scott, for giving the opportunity to speak your delight on this morrow weekend. I never thought I would see us having a council meeting on the ballpark. But unfortunately, you people's decisions have brought all of these people out and we tried to tell you over and over and over what you're doing wrong. No one is. Listen, um... Recently, on the political forum blog, Leslie, and I'm not criticizing you for this. You said that a lot of people here in Dunsborough were just angry, angry old white people. Well, I'm gonna tell you something. I am an angry old white person. It's the morrow day weekend. And through the history of the time in this country, we have had over two million men and women die for the freedoms that we have today. Okay? And what do we have? A million in the ballpark. It is ridiculous. And what have we had accomplished in the last seven months? Crap on the, from the dogs on the ballpark. Marijuana ordinances, reprimanding ads, stealing in public forums. You people, after the 3rd of June, I hope that this city council will get its act together and start moving this town forward with the Trail to Lost Gray Falls, the kayak racing on the river, a whitewater park, and continue the Big Fish program. Bring community into this town instead of marching to your old drummer and doing what you want to accomplish. It's the people we should be listening to, and up until now, you haven't listened to us. Scott, right now, I'm putting my trust in you, man, because I know I'm not getting it over here. Okay?
If you get a grip on the situation, because it is ridiculous that we're not having... That we're here tonight on a Friday. We're having special meetings and special meetings. There's a limited scope, real narrow purpose for these meetings. And, uh, I do think it's being stretched because there are no regular meetings. There are very few far between. We had regular meeting in March that was canceled, um, because the, uh, providing officer was substituting at the state school. But the meeting was at 6:30 and the school ended at 2:30. It's all over. So there's reasons behind what's happened. And I, Mrs. Kelby, I asked for a full investigation into your complaints. And I look forward to it. Because I've been in that subject, uh, the same situation. I can have council members coming to my hall, offering to take votes. City manager in my hall, which is my castle. I don't believe that this is how we should operate. What going people have, these private deals out. Um, and it's not just, it's not just a limited. It's the whole council, the state, if they sign. It needs to be all intact. My purpose here wasn't to pass it and patch a new rule. It was simply to handle it when I see it as a leadership issue. And the legislative issue, as a function of it, and what's causing this problem. And I think that that was appropriately fixed target into one rule, one rule, where I had to receive each other. But that didn't come stuff by now. Mr. Wilson?
Hey, thank you. Uh, Brenda Wilson, 24th and Off Street. I've gotta go to a baseball game this evening. So I'd like to mention the speech about something that we're not talking about right now.
Sure.
Okay, uh, I really, really want you to know that I support Brenda Baines. I think Brenda Baines is a magical lady. I, I think that Brenda Baines has gone through awful. I wouldn't want anybody to go through that. Uh, she is probably the best city manager I've ever worked for. She cares about her people. She, she trusts her supervisors. She's everything you can want. She gives you guys money. That's the big one. Uh, leave her alone, please. You know, leave her alone. Wait, wait till after the fifth and come together in this room and see if you still feel the same way. Make sure it's not one person leading you down this road. Uh, the other thing is, is that the road, I'm worried about this city going down. There's a big financial cost of our city attorney. I'm worried that the actions you guys are doing could cause us to be, have a lawsuit. And guess who's been a westerly side in our city? Mr. Hicks, who's your defense attorney. He's gonna get a lot of money to defend you guys. Either way, the city is losing. Is that not correctly mentioned, Mr. Wilson? Uh, because that would be my theory. If you would defend him, I'd wanna see him make a lot of money.
No, actually what, that's, actually what would happen is, if there was a lawsuit and it was intended... Mr. Wilson would...
You can have it at a different time. Uh, you know, hey, but anyway... I, I have a lot of trust in, I know Mr. Tim and I talked, we talked, we try and hear right now. We, we've worked a lot on our relationship over the past couple of weeks. You know, buddy, there's a lot of people here that are trusting you. Don't let it down. You know, you gotta live here for the rest of your life. Run it off today, it's not tomorrow, Kevin. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you for coming up with the podium. Please be pleased I'm gonna let Mr. Hicks respond to a personal attack. Just so that you know, uh, Mr. Wilson... Well, that's a warning. Next time, that happens, I'm gonna move it. No yelling from the audience. A Mr. Wilson statue or something is in the rest. If there was a lawsuit against the city, it would be intended to be the, uh, city's insurance company. The problem is that the city has to pay a $25,000 deductible on every lawsuit that's been killed.
So as long as you don't make $25,000, okay? All right?
Okay. Um, my name is, my name is Diana Ball. And, um, I had a pleasure observing with Arliss, Nick, Chris, and Ed for a little bit too years. And I gotta say, I'm proud of our accomplishments. I think we can record ourselves professionally. Uh, I think we need all that with a good reputation. And today, um, I'm sorry to say that I am ashamed and I am embarrassed by the way this city council has conducted these jobs. Um, it appears to me that the turnout of these meetings is proof that most of the people in this town are unhappy with what's going on. And even though I'm not a part of it, it's still close to my heart. I hope that the illegal things that you people are doing and the secrecy and the violations eventually come back to bite you guys in the back.
Gary Thompson, 5744 Dunsborough Avenue. I'm relatively new to this town. In the few months that I've been here, I've witnessed some things that are just really questionable, troubling. Um, I came up here about a year ago and didn't wanna come back. And because, uh, some things that I ended up giving this place another chance. And it was because of people like Brenda Baines that I talked to, um, that I was considering relocating. I, I have a business incubator that I've been looking where I'm going to land. And this is one of the places I was looking. That this could be part of something, uh, that could take a bunch of companies, probably be as big as fire watch or bigger. Who knows, and who knows what's coming down the line? But looking at the politics that's going on here, the fighting, the special meetings, all that stuff. What's actually accomplished at meetings? Why do I have to be there? This is, you know, there's not really a reason. There's a lot of places I can go. One of my client companies, uh, she does wanna come up here. She, but she's decided she's gonna go to Mount Shasta. She doesn't wanna be part of Dunsborough. So she's sort of, that's what's going on. And this is, you know, this just needs to be cleaned up. This is, this is, you're hurting the economy. You're, all this is just really stifling all the people here. And so hopefully I'd be bringing new businesses that are coming in, looking to come into this town. Clean it up. Clean up the act.
Steve, cutting 431 through Wood Street here in Dunsborough. I don't think we'd be here today had you listened to the people. You were told that there was gonna be a large crowd. You could have had the meetings at the community building like you did the first time. But no, you decided to keep your meetings at your chambers, which wouldn't bother the crowd. Had you followed the advice from the people and had your meetings at the community building where they could hold the crowd and everybody could participate, we wouldn't be here now. Good afternoon, everybody. You guys are killing me now. What I see here, we should be, disgrace to us. You guys ought to be disgraced. You're only 4% of the voting populace of this city. What about the other 96% that we did listen to? Instead of making capital on you guys every week, restoring meetings, can't get city business done? You guys ought to be ashamed of yourself by blocking city business. And you guys don't even, you guys see one side of the story. You just don't see, like, the emails I get belittling disrespect, insubordination. You guys don't know what's going on. Only what you wanna see. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Wow, you're back. No cell phones. I'm talking to everyone who has phone devices. Mrs. Kelby is handling that. You, your expertise and the rules, isn't it in that fair political practice decision, Mr. Wilson? No cell phones here, huh? They gotta be texting. Okay, well, it's true, it's true. Of course you're aware there's another side of this. There's just as many people out there. We get a lot of calls. Calls from you. You happen to be the ones who show up. They're all the ones who don't. They have things to say too. So it's not that we're just not listening to you. We've got to weigh these things, you know, and, uh... And you ought to be focused on making prudent, frank decisions with the finances and not be trying to run the administrative side of the city. And it becomes so intertwined now, uncoordinated, I believe, that it causes a lot of confusion. I am not set out there. My understanding of the Brown Act is, an open meeting is pretty simple. Um, it's like the extra 60 hours, one year, four weeks, a year. You know, you just, you don't, you know, poll, you know, go around and just remember that member. There's been issues with that. And, um, you make a decision that you, you are reasoning without in front of the public. You make the decision that while the public's there, a plan is coming out. And be careful not to even get together with more than, than we're able. So, I'll be honest. Did you really all try to say something in public comments? Or you didn't? One other thing. Everybody's complaining about Brown Act violations, serial meetings. When that first got on here, I, Bonnie, Dave, and Leslie... What's up, Bonnie? Generally, you wanna call a special meeting, why don't you even do it? You got my blessing. You have to talk to me. I might not know what's on the agenda when I get there, but I'll be there if I'm not working. There's no Brown Act or serial meetings going on. You guys are fantasizing. Well, like I said, I asked for a full investigation into that. And I did make some reports of my own. I necessarily, the rose to a level that was above the Brown Act violation. Close.
I'm a bit confused. Where are we in the agenda?
Give him a microphone.
Zero on B. Mine's up to the net.
Give him mine. Give him a microphone.
I look...
I have other things to say, but it sounds like you're pushing it together.
Oh!
So the council is refusing to give a speaker a microphone, apparently.
Same.
Where are we, where are we in the agenda? Protocols were tabled for lack of motion.
What did you say?
I said, where are we in the agenda?
Nine A.
Now they're harassing her for not being heard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, that's for lack of motion.
What happened? You should have waited later and you actually had the opportunity to read them. I didn't make it. I already did. I take, I said, I, um, I asked you to just be tabled to the next meeting, right in the meeting. So I was, um, I made that motion. Do you ready on seven? Do you agree to it? That's a good point. Go ahead.
We talked about having something about decor on the agenda because a lot of people that I'd asked to come to the meetings have said they're not gonna come to the meetings anymore. There's no decor. You don't follow the agenda. You have public comment, and then you close it, and then you reopen it, and then you close it, and you reopen it. People start yelling. I had one person with PTSD come in. I could never go to the meetings again. There's so many things that I don't experience. You know, it makes her, she said she almost had a right attack. Somebody put me in it, you know, and I'm like, who am I? And that's what made me. I started talking protocols over the end because people don't want to attend. It's having an effect on democracy. But people wanna come and see if they expect an order of a courtroom and they yell, "Benzel!" And that looks unable, well, unwilling to enforce the law. That's exactly why. So I, so Scott asked me to put something on there. He directed me to look up the protocols from the city of Power Welter. And I copied and taped them and put them on the agenda. And so that's the reason those protocols are on there. And I know that, that many of the people are aware of them because I saw that they were posted to Facebook. And I think there's a lot of counting.
But you're not following that when you're doing a different one. Guys...
This is why you have...
Now, this moment, let me... Well, we never, you was interrupted. Now, if we met, we didn't vote on you. We didn't vote to take them. We sit and die.
And I'm in the middle of it. You know, this is a particular incident. That is probably just that's the matter.
Order. What are you gonna do when the Mount Shasta protocols come up at the meeting? You already have a protocol. Why didn't you go to the Mount Shasta protocols for this item? Why didn't you go to some other city instead of the Mount Shasta protocols which you want to pass? And I like the court.
Maybe come up with something more simple, very simple, 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 okay?
Our rights, disrespecting, and...
This is why we need protocols, Scott. People won't come to the meetings when they're like...
Stop yelling at us, you're weak.
And you, I have my...
Come on, you've already said something. You've been tying it up the whole time.
I haven't had the opportunity to give...
We'll bring this, if you wanna bring this...
This is a right to privilege.
No, not now. No, not now. Now, if you wanna bring this closing up again, does anybody wanna second that and make a comment on it? Protocols. We're back in protocols.
I have 454.
What did you say?
Oh, you didn't hear?
Well, I didn't know. Was it an emergency sort of thing or...
Yeah, I told this lady, she's gotta make sure.
Good show. I'm glad you're here. Mr. Wilson. I would tell, would you, uh, please, uh... All right, I just said I asked that everybody try to be respectful and civil, and not disruptive, and so we continue in the meeting, and the vice mayor, the sheriff, and he will give you the opportunity to say a few words if you have something that you want to voice. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Is anybody left to talk to, and might say something?
Wait, please, can we have a microphone?
Hello, um, I am Rachel here, and, and, I mean, Arlen, I'm sorry. And, um, my name is Laura Vile, and I just have one question, and before the next meeting, I, if you guys can come up with an answer for this, I would, you know, prefer that. Why can't we do some of those things to boost the economy here? Why? Why can't we get the whitewater rafting, the, the, stuff to bring people up here? Like, what were some of the things she was talking about? The kayaking, and, yeah, and the Trail of the Most Fairy Falls, and all that. I, I just want to know why. And another question I ask, why is everybody jumping over our lawyer? He went to a university. He, he went to college. He's a professional, like a doctor, like an engineer, like anybody that, that worked hard to make something of himself. That's why he gets paid the amount of money he does, you know? He happens to have the knowledge to go to law school, school, and do what he did, and obviously he graduated, and that's his job. If we don't want a lawyer, if we want to hire somebody that gets paid less, let's do that. Thank you.
I don't think I'll need a microphone, so I'm happy to use it.
Please use it. Please use it.
And I'll have to keep quiet, because I have a tendency to be loud. Um, County District Attorney, Division for Willow Street, Caldwell Avenue, Karen Dasthere. Um, I'm going to just say something regarding the council meetings that Tim remarked to. We're going to keep coming. The people are not happy. The people that everyone's to, Ms. Wild, I'm not sure who, I feel bad for whoever it was that ended up in the yard, that's a terrible thing. I do feel bad about that. That's, that's not anybody's fault. That is something that happened. It would have happened regardless of her going to a meeting, I'm sure. I hope that she is well. I don't know who it is, but I hope that God willing, she's okay. We will continue to keep coming until things get resolved, once and for all, after being third, one way or the other. When that happens, then we will go from there. But we're not going to stop coming. It's our right, we are upset, and you need to listen to us. Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, Speaker Caldwell Avenue.
One of the things, and this is true, people are gonna still keep coming, after the third and on, because they're sick and tired of this. You want to talk about decorum? How many meetings have you stormed out of, Leslie? How many times have you stopped up and screamed at the audience, mm-hmm? Oh, you want to see them on video? I've got them. The ones that you've even recorded. You know, so let's go cut it back. Everybody stand up on your own. Quit casting stones. Look at your own. Why are the people tired of being nowhere? For nine months since you've been put on the board on City Council, we've gone nowhere. Well, this is the recall that's been put up. Dead stop. Just like we're saying, bring this town around. We're in an environmental trap and an economy trap. We have, we're starting to get going, because if your things, calling special meetings, this kind of crap, keep getting bounced back, bounced back, bounced back. One more time, another time.
Excuse me, I'm gonna say something, then let you finish up, three seconds.
Excuse me, my question, please, I have my question.
I'm giving deference to you.
One other thing, there was a debate, when I was running, we was there, and even Leslie texted him the answers. How I noticed, I was reading the text, and when they asked me to give him another question, he got all flustered up, and couldn't answer till the text came through. There's our technology.
Have a good day, folks, and happy Memorial Day. I was trying to say that I was giving deference to the people that you run in this city, so I think everyone's interested in what you have to say. Nope. Not your one. Mr. Harvey. No yelling out in the crowd.
It's terrible. Let's see if this works best, people. Okay, let's just start at the beginning. Um...
Who are you?
I'm Mario Romino, 55, Dunsmere Avenue, Dunsmere, California. Past councilman, I was recalled. I have gone to many, many council meetings, which started before I got on council. I participated two years of them, and I've been in many of the debates with. Uh, even with probably the worst disagreements over the water and rate hikes, has there never been a council with such a lack of decorum as this one? And I know that it's a good idea for more minds to blame Mr. Dave, but the truth is, and we all know it, because we are witnessing the meeting in front of us, unorganized, controversial, confrontational, all these things that we get. And I know, I know in my heart, that we're trying to do something, but what you've done is completely aggravated the people and not worth it for the people. Scott, 200 votes in Mount Shasta is all it takes to win an election. 200 meetings, most of the time. That's your voting population. You say that for 900 people, you're not even close to living the reality now. There's no cloud there, there's no understanding there. And the thing is, me and Artis stood toe-to-toe in meetings, and Artis and Bunny were upset with my council over what we're doing, and I still didn't have the decorum that you guys have. Do we need Mount Shasta protocols? It would be a good idea to have protocols, but are they necessary? Absolutely not. You vote in the people with your ideas. Your ideas ferment from the people. When you have support, you vote and you make them happen on council. Do stuff to me, do finding out where the people are at, talking to the people. I've got 60 emails to you, you won't answer a single one of them. I've been to your door, I've invited you places, you're not even talking to me. That is not a council. Councilmen talks to the constituents. I've never yelled at you, I've never had a bad conversation with you at your house, I've always treated you with respect, and the respect I get is I can't even get any kind of answer from you on email. See, I've never talked to you when you mentioned in my house. We've had conversations. It's me coming to you over very serious issues. You're not helping the public, you're not talking with the public, you're not sharing with the public, you're not even a public person. And so when it comes time and you bring these issues, and they're incredibly controversial issues, whether it's hiring a psychiatrist for the city council, which might have been a joke on your part, but it's not a joke for us when we read, when we read that, that resolution, it's, it's just my, oh my god.
But why come here and let go?
This is not trouble. This is me worried about my town, my livelihood. This is me... Mr. Hicks has got $14,255 of invoices in front of town. He's got another six weeks to come bill. That is penis. This town doesn't spend money like that. That is wrong. You did it, and you expect me not to be upset?
I don't.
This is, you know what that is? That bill represents Railroad Day, Fish Project, Big Fish, Memorial Day. That's the money that comes to the general fund. And then, when the general fund pays the tax, they say, "Oh, we'll take it from your water bill. We take an 8% from your sewer bill. We're taking 6% from your garbage bill." It's ridiculous. We know what that means. It means there are serious issues that have to be tackled. But, but, he never, should have been hired under that contract. Mr., Mr. Padula told me, he could have read the contract. Hand it to me to read. You told me, "I've got five minutes to read this. I'm the only one reading it. I'm responsible for this contract." There has never been a contract that had to be signed in the moment. There has never been a contract that had to be signed in the moment, that you could have read to the public, or you can go home for a week and look it over. That contract we have in front of lawyers, it's a laughing disgrace. I have that contract in front of city managers. It's a laughing disgrace. Do you want to see the emails?
It's sent to the appendix to the League of Cities' model contract.
It is an edited version of what was in the League of Cities.
Well, if I can get something on the agenda finally, we're going to put that contract on the next second meeting.
Scott, Scott, we pray, we pray so.
You canceled the meetings.
Scott, we don't trust. We have lost our trust with council. What part of this don't you understand? We wanted to trust you. We came to your door and talked to you and begged you. We asked you. There was a meeting just a couple meetings ago, where you and Mr. Padula could have fixed the contract. You guys didn't show up.
I already picked it up.
You guys didn't show up, and nothing happened on the contract. Mr. Hicks then turned in another probably $6,000 with the bills. So now he gets to turn in another $6,000 in bills for the next two weeks. You're draining us, and we know it.
What was that, Brown Act violation? That was a special meeting, if you said. Cause it came over and offered me a vote. Besides going down there with Mr. Hicks, who's known to be out of town.
I, I disagree. I have heard both sides of that, and I, that's what happened. I have heard both sides of that, and I disagree with your analysis that you were offered a membership for a vote, and I just don't believe it. And you know what? The facts would play out. But as far as Brown Acts go, you don't even want to go through all that.
No. Brown Act, open meeting, how can you, if you won't even have open meetings, and you kind of list your base, cancel, 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 and not in good faith. So that's a Brown Act violation. They'll open meetings.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am, for ten, the reason why I asked everybody on the agenda, because you seem to be jumping around, and it's not really getting us to any point. I thought that nothing had gone back from you visited the matter of decorum. Um, I want you, everybody to understand, I've always been respectful to each of you. Ken, give us a time when you told me in Sandy, that you were the only one in town talking to you like a real person. Leslie, I do regret being respectful to you, and you were in my state streaming after a finance meeting. Um, Scott, I have kept everyone of your personal confidence, and I have kept and invited, and I will continue to do so. I'm, you've always been honest with me, and I'm giving you my best advice, but you took it away. No. You went to law school. Use your education. You're a very smart man. If you lead the Brown Act for yourself, you will have your minds opening while you confuse. The Brown Act contains a remedy that does not require litigation. So, please, find your legal advice from your own good education, and don't listen to a legal advisor who's a mean people. It might pop into, sorry there. But like, okay, it might pop into, that's only one tool, and if that's the only tool you're going to use, then we're in trouble. And I want you to use your brilliant talents. Thank you.
Mabel, go ahead, Mabel. Give us a list of these meetings that were cancelled and why. All I want to say is, every law is created for a reason. The 218 process that my council had to live through was created for a reason, and when judges look at these things, they, they look at the reason the law was created. The Brown Act was created. There's an intent behind the Brown Act. It's openness in government. In your heart, in your speed, you need to be open. That's, that's following the Brown Act. And Mr. Padula, after, I don't want to say this, but you were in the light by the grand jury assisting the county, you're close, and have the city find the Brown Act, not Brown Act, fair practices issues, okay? I'm still not sure that you're clear on fair practices issues, because I still see the meetings that do things.
Listen, it's not fair to everybody if I just want to bounce around and go on. So this will be a grand finale, so open public comments, and, um, go for it. Mr. Harvey?
I wanted to just point out that I think I have probably witnessed one of the lowest points in the quite some odd years, when the presiding officer of the beauty asked the deputy sheriff to remove a speaker from the podium addressing this council. There are lots of problems associated with that, lots of problems. If we cannot, cannot, cannot abide by the practice of good reading order and discipline, then we need to go back to school and learn how to do it. And there are a lot of practices. There are lots of ways to resolve problems and issues. One of the reasons, I'll just speak for myself, I'm convinced that the fix is in. There isn't anything else to say, because Tim rolls his eyes, Leslie scratches her head, and you've just kind of got to feel for rubber chin and worry about, worry about that.
I'm not personal insults.
I just, I just have a real problem with the fact that we have a five-member council and two members can't be here because they know that the fix is already in, the decisions have been made. And there are lots of ways to go in and make those decisions, if you really believe in it. Come up for a battle. If you believe in what you say, that we're only 4% to him, wait until, until June 5th, and then deal with it.
That's all, no, no. Public comments can't be cut off, and I'm reading here Brown Acts. Let me start the remaining events several times. That's about it. We've got about one more. Would you like to hear one more? This is what the Brown Act says. Let me start off by just very carefully, very slowly, so everyone understands the reason. I want, it's four paragraphs, four sentences. In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils, and the other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the context, context of the people's business. It is the intent of a law that their actions be taken openly, and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of the state do not wield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know, and what is not good for the people to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have for... I have to preempt over there in front. We're gonna move on to the agenda there. Do you want to, in on your local, uh...
I think it's pretty clear why we're in a protocol. There's, there's serious stuff at the time, and nobody wants to attend, stuff, this name group. You called me again, I stopped, ready to write acts, and said you want to call a special meeting. We've had a number of regular meetings canceled on purpose by this group. I tried to move it to the... I tried to move it to the community center and somebody called me the night before and said, "I already heard Mario Biden and he's going to block you from trying to have the meeting at the community center." So I thought I better get there early. I got there right at nine o'clock before they even opened. And sure enough, at eight fifty-five, Mario rolled up and said, "I was just talking with Mike Friggin'. I'd watch it if they had the meeting at the community center." So you can see, nobody's using the community center right now. But that's why we're forced to have it here. But the lack of decorum is why a lot of people don't want to attend these meetings. And so I, I've tried to have the Mount Shasta protocol. They tried to have workshops to develop our own. I just feel like it's, it's taking too long. It shouldn't take two years to establish a simple protocol for the people to love and screw. So I agree with Scott. They should put this on the agenda. But I'll pick Mount Shasta protocol to one of your best. Those are awesome. I'll pick the ones from, uh, Palo Alto. Those work too. But one thing that you have to remember is that a public meeting is not the public square. The same First Amendment free speech rights, not per change to a specific meeting. The mayor can limit the comments. He can limit them to three minutes. He can limit them to a subject matter. All of those things. And that's even in the government code. The mayor has a right to limit the public comments length and subject matter. Just like in a courtroom. There is not First Amendment free speech rights. That's why the judge hasn't gathered. That's why the mayor has a job. And I certainly don't mind personal attacks on my vote. You can attack the yellow screen all day long and tell me I'm, "It's terrible the vote that I raise." But please don't say, "It's terrible that your car doesn't start unless you put your battery cable on." Or, "I pulled yourself a hundredth form and you don't make a lot of money." So that's why we put the language in there about personal attacks. That's a personal attack. This can really attack my vote. This can attack my policy conditions. I welcome it. I love debate, especially with people with whom I disagree. So I like to, to hear your side, to hear my side. I'm open to persuasion. That's why I try and talk to you. I enjoy it. That's why I'm sitting on this side of the table. I, I agree the most in that we adopt some sort of protocols because you can't be forty-three days.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about it for an hour and a half now. You're well aware of what's on this list. I think you've gone over and over and over it, everybody here. As far as the other citizens, it is supposed to be. So I'll stop and go ahead.
Sir, may I have a quick comment?
Okay.
I just found a personal attack from council and I'm not allowed to rebuttal. Thank you.
Hey, I'm at the community center. Is that food? Did you run it out? No, we haven't. Let's call them. Well, we must be back, yeah, we have to. Pretty funny. Um, this is something, uh, so, my, my. So I believe that we adopted, I think this according to the city council. Are these all the? How are you all doing? How are you all doing? Get on the up. We are, uh, new business. Did you call that board after the mail? Now, uh. Well, I was asking a question as far as our republic comment we're going to have right now concerning how you do business, the conduct of the mayor. First public gets a chance to talk. This woman is supposed to that topic. Uh, three lines each and we'll be done, uh, thirteen, thirteen minutes. I think we've had a while already. Let's try, let things go.
I'm a bit confused about the agenda items. A lot of this confused me when I called it the city council. When you speak of the conduct of the mayor, I'm talking about how he started the soapbox derby or how he was the voice out leader. Uh, there's nothing on the agenda to allow us to understand whether or not you're going to say something derogatory or something extravagant. And I find that very difficult.
Oh, I think it includes both. It includes me kicking my ass on it and it includes soapbox.
Excuse me. I do not appreciate that kind of language. Thank you very much.
And this is just community. And it's the second time it was viewed. Um, it didn't work here. Something needs to be addressed today.
Bruce H. There is one person in this town that I think is universally respected. And I shouldn't say universally. Obviously, there are some people who don't. But the one person that I hear over and over and over and over again that they trust nothing more than his integrity and that he does not care about anything else about doing right by the city. And if anybody here thinks that they're going to come up here and put down that after everything is done, we've watched what he's done with the kids and the adults. We don't see anybody else out here doing those things with the students and the kids. But you're going to stand here and disparage our mayor so that you can get some little points out of it? This is inappropriate. We need to pull together. He's the one person that's respected and you're the three that aren't.
Gary Tomchek Denver, I think. Um, all I can say is that Big Dave has been one of the few people that's actually reached out to me and actually helped me here at this talk. So, um, also I can state to my comrades that I'm hearing a lot of things coming back from comments in the crowd and I'm also hearing council interrupting some of the speakers. So the protocol is not a work for a play. If you don't call the, the officers to take the phone and call you here, when you make a comment, the officers should then take the phone and call you.
Okay, call the public comment. Can you ask him?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make fun of you.
This is on the mayor, right? Okay. We don't have a strong bear situation. Um, I understand that with the tournament and the meeting that has been really rough, we're just going to use Leslie's example and get it off the table. Um, I have no special connections. If you call Mount Shasta Rec, you can hit Mike Friggin' at his phone number. He knows what I did. So I've seen Leslie four or five times from the time I rented the building. I saw Tim at least three times today. He was at, uh, Chamber of Commerce. He was here. I've been around. I'm doing my thing. I emailed you, Scott. No reply. I'm a past councilman. I'm a great human. I don't like the little people standing out in the rain. I was never asked that I accommodate a meeting with what I had going on. I was never asked. I wasn't hiding from anybody. I was there. But this is what this council is like. They're not with the people. They're not communicating with people. They don't come up to you as a friend and say, "Hey, I'm Mr. Padula. You're a past councilman. Try to work out a deal." Absolutely, I would have said. With that lawyer, no, you're not going to have that attitude. You're getting here, "Well, maybe we got to sue him." In fact, the quote was, "Some have said..." There was, what was it? Criminal conspiracy. You're talking about your fellow townspeople. You're talking about your fellow humans. You're talking about your fellow United States citizens. Some have said criminal conspiracy. Would I have given you that room? Absolutely. Scott, call me. I emailed. I saw you. Leslie, you were right in front of me. Try to work something out. I do this all the time. I have conflicts with officials and parks and reps all the time with me using the utility field and other people using it. College of the Siskiyou. I had to do a whole life design for Dana Macy's dance program so I could be in a leak early to make sure my type will show with us. You've got to work with the people, folks. I mean, you're missing the picture. It's like, who can we sue? That's what this town's about. And everybody's afraid Mr. Hicks is going to sue everybody. Criminal conspiracy. Some have said. Think about it. Dude, I'm, I'm a fellow human. I've known you. Criminal conspiracy. One of the things we should talk about integrity and, uh, about Dave. I mean, hey, nobody's perfect in this world. But then again, when people just take criminal attacks against people for the sake of the name, things like that, right, folks? Uh, now to the point where you take the internet and you take, uh, a case out of D. Martin, a city staff officer in Shasta County that involved me and specializes on the internet, Facebook. Look good, Leslie. Uh, did you bother me to dismiss? No, you like to just tear people down right at. That's what you're doing. One person, one step at a time to this town.
Just about the mayor?
Yes, she's doing the same thing. She's going to do it to you, Scott, but that's okay. You're part of the team, the little cheer crew. The rest of the town has finally said, "Enough is enough." There's a recall. Wait till that's over. Then see where we all stand in the town that comes here.
Nothing more.
So hard. I speak for myself, for my husband Sean. We have four, four children, we have a nephew. Here and then here. I left it before we were new. We just moved the dance room and outdoor. But as to the character of the the mayor, uh, Big Dave, he was, I thought, um, we weren't in here two weeks when, um, my husband's, uh, Willoughby scooter has an issue. It got stuck in the air and we couldn't get it to fall for now. And we were there working on it. Trying to get a picture from Mr. Willoughby. He came riding by. He stopped instantly and asked what was going on. And within a few minutes, he had four people up there helping us get that scooter fixed, back online and ready. Now, if he didn't care, if he was not a compassionate person, um, then I must not understand what is. So as far as character, I'm fine.
Oh, Steel. Uh, I know how you three, uh, uh, think about Big Dave and I know you want to take him off as mayor. And, uh, I would just have to say that if I was mayor and had to put up with what the guys have given him, I would probably have done a lot worse than I did. But, uh, anyway, um, listening to you talk about the way people are handling themselves at this, uh, these meetings. I was on the city council for two years. I was mayor for one year. I absolutely loved being on the city council because our city council, under Jeff Steel, Diane Law, Chris Rang, and Nick Mitchell and myself, we moved this city forward. We sent out the water bills and we listed what was going on in those areas. And it was all good stuff. And I hate to say that, but you people could even list one good thing that's happened in the last seven months. And Leslie talking, you talking about the people being rude. Yeah, they're rude and they're mad. But you know, when I was on the city council, you and Mr. Hicks threatened us at every meeting with a Brown Act violation. Threats of intimidation. He sued through four of the city council people. He sued Marty Wolford. He sued the city. He lost all those cases. And you were one of them that was bringing him information and suing him lies. So don't sit there all smug like you aren't guilty of any of this stuff because you are. You created this environment in this city. And, uh, Scott, you know, I, you know how highly I think of you. I had you in the military. You know what democracy is. You know what transparency is. For God's sake, let's get this thing straightened out here after the third review. Let's get this city rolling. This city has so much potential. And we're talking about perhaps a dog on the ball field. We're censuring the mayor and everything else that you guys are doing. This stuff on this agenda shouldn't even be on there. We shouldn't have a special meeting today because all of them are on the fifth of June.
My lady friend Steel, if you're not fifty-one years old, Adam. I've had my Mount Shasta many years now. I'm just going to work. Even though a low ten years since I have. Last I've had to endure many, many comments about my husband sitting in a city council meeting in the audience. Can I tell you many times? Leslie Wilde said disgusting, vile remarks about my husband. One that always stands out in my mind is when she told my husband, who no longer have lost the election, and she said, "You have no way out." Very obvious. "All of you, you should take your counsel with you and shut it under." Okay, I didn't go over. I had a nap. And I didn't go over and hear it. It's like, I said to you, and I said, "You had better watch your nap." And I think she remembered I was putting you higher. So while I had a call, she slumped down in her seat and she shut up the rest of the evening. So when she sits here and tells everybody in this audience how we're nasty and hateful and mean and cruel, we all are, take a look at yourself next time you're in the mirror, Leslie. We love you. I can't believe there's a mayor talking to a gay town here that is any hateful and meaner and crueler than you are. And it's a sad legacy that leaves behind when you're no longer on the street, careful. At least the four of these people, Diane Law, Nick Mitchell, Oliver Steel, and Chris Rang, slept with her kids full time. And what do you have to show for you? I don't know if anything that you've done in your life is positive. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to say that, Scott, because I know you don't like. So people have, the past people personally, but you all are not enough. And people are tired of it. They're, they're saddened by all of this. And I hope when they all see a response, the only way I can fix you is through your own self-awareness. Like, and you're one of these people who want to be a new beginning. And you're not like them. They just want to see you succeed. They need to know that you're lucky to succeed. I admire you. I've been, I've been able to do this, Scott, you know? But I admire you. I always admire you. You know, and when people talk to us and say that, "You know that Leslie Wilde had, yeah, video, yeah, so, uh, uh, pictures of Leslie sneaking in our back door, mucking our windows." Look at, look at that. We don't, I don't know, I never had one of those in the city council, we've got people on the city council sneaking in our back door and locking on our dead room doors. But she does, she did it, don't deny it, Leslie. You know, what's the battle about? You say you don't have serial meetings, but what with that? Why do you ever show up to my council at 7:15 in the morning and tap on your window? And get them out of bed? I just, you know, I don't know what else to say, it's just, you know, we, I understand what you're saying, you know, there's another side to the other side of the story, the people call you or write you or whatever. I want to see people in common voice their opinion, I really do. And it's sad that it's all the same with us, we have to be setting people here, get everything, get everything over with. I don't know what else, that's all I'm gonna say.
Hey, could you say that again, we couldn't hear you.
We agreed on motion that we, uh, play five minute break, please.
Is there a hold on motion? That's good!
It's been right!
I was gonna make a comment, but now I have to just do a little carryover.
Sing along with me.
Okay, five minute break.
Anyway, I'm gonna make my comment anyway, um, you know, I pointed, Big Dave was mayor, and within a month, you were attacking him and wanting to remove him as mayor. And it really, I just wanna point out, it really brings into question your decision-making ability. So, that's it.
You can close the signal. Take the bolt, take the hose, put a microphone in there.
Public comment was closed off on conduct of the mayor. That's good, meeting's great.
Great, so, great.
Great, so.
What happened, sir?
We're gonna have some, um, some comments down here concerning, I, um, I conduct of the mayor. First, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read...
Hey, you wanna call the meeting back to order, please?
Yes. It's not clear, I'm not, I'm not as a parliamentarian, so I follow that. Uh, I called the meeting back to order. Alright. Now, the gun thing is reading, and my intention is to, um, take a motion to continue these items as expected, to have the meeting and, um, to subdue and clear that as well. I've taken more than six minutes, and I want you guys to, to share some, to grab a little bit more. We only have the committees and mayors, they discuss the way in discussion. I'm thinking about, you know, I'm the one to read that letter. You know what? Yeah, I'm gonna do this, sir. I just wanna mention a few bullets of things. I am, I, I'll stay on the agenda, a few bullets of things that I thought of considering on committee. Not Mr. Kaiser in particular, but the function of our mayor. Those functions include ma- she-in-chief to run a meeting. Obviously, meeting has to occur. The responsible to run an orderly meeting. And to conduct business fair and timely. So, not by special means, but here now. That they maintain order. If the mayor should not allow cheering, hissing, booing, and other demonstrations. That the mayor must keep these meetings moving. That having the people moving. You've probably seen the list, and are aware that there were five or six regular meetings that have been sched- can't scheduled in Kansas this year already. That, um, the mayor must manage the public testimony, using a sign-up sheet if necessary to keep the time limited. I wanted to talk here. Um, and also to prevent arguments. To conduct the meeting in such a way that limits, um, the opportunity for people to really engage in arguments. I don't know how that's done, but, so there's a technique. Uh, and he has parliamentary procedures. You can see, I, I, you know, I've faulted that a few times already, yeah. But they need to know how to run the meetings, how to tie things together, that they need to take into account public testimony, counsel deliberations, which is different than the base, and understand the issues, uh, council-wide issues towards decisions. Our meetings haven't been run properly. I'm not blaming a pretty blunt person. I'm gonna read to you a letter, um, that I just saw a little bit ago. That was written by a district attorney, Mr. Andrews. On the twentieth, to the mayor. It is regarding a letter of censure, Brown Act violation on January 5th, 2004, at the Dunsborough City Council meeting. Dear Mayor Kaiser, Pursuant to reports by interested citizens of the city, of the city of Dunsborough, this office conducted an investigation into alleged violations of the Brown and Brown Act, codified in Government Code Section 54950 except. The purpose of the Brown Act is to ensure that the actions of government and the deliberations be taken and conducted openly. Due to widespread public inquiry, and in the interest, interest of transparency, this letter of censure will be made available to the public in Government Code Section 54952.2b1. Which prohibits a majority of members' use of a quote "series of communications" to discuss any item of business that is within, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, end quote. These are commonly known as serial meetings. Furthermore, the Brown Act prescribes notice procedures designed to alert the public to discovering the content of these public meetings. The comprehensive collection of evidence by the DA Bureau of Investigation for the County Siskiess Sheriff regarding several Dunsborough City Council meetings held thus far 2014 clearly shows violations of the Brown Act by the Dunsborough City Council surrounding a special meeting held on January 5th, 2014. These violations include insufficient notice of this special meeting, as well as a contemporary violation of the prohibition against serial meetings. This letter of censure will constitute the action I will take as a result of these findings. This is for two reasons. First, the council members have an open forum declared the need for additional Brown Act training, and a determination that such training will be facilitated. And secondly, Mayor Kaiser's actions at the January 5th meeting preclude the need for additional sanctions. At that meeting, after Mayor Kaiser called the meeting to order, Kirk Wilson read a statement raising concerns under the Brown Act, including insufficient notice to council members. After some discussion and a motion to act upon agenda business by Councilmember Wild, Mayor Kaiser moved to, Mayor Kaiser moved to adjourn the meeting. Upon the assent, assenting votes of Mayor Kaiser and Councilmember Welsh, only four members were present at the meeting, Councilmember Steele being absent, apparently out of town, the meeting was adjourned after twenty minutes. And mischief was averted by the adjournment of the meeting, with no council business happening to conduct it. The Dunsborough City Council is on notice that strict adherence to Brown Act strictures is expected and required. Sanctions for additional violations may be varied. And the spectrum ranges to include universal business conducted and recalcitrant, uh, meetings, and possible criminal prosecution of council members. The prosecution of such violations is exceedingly rare. Continued Brown Act violations may prove sufficient evidence of knowing and intentional violations of the Brown Act. The council is instructed to review Brown Act requirements and strictly follow them. The council is encouraged to schedule regular Brown Act training for all members. Please let me know if I convene of assistants. Sincerely, Kirk Andrews, district attorney. Do either of you two wanna say anything? About the conduct of the mayor?
I haven't seen the letter, so, that was the first I've heard of it. But I didn't put this item on the agenda. And I told the person that acted to put it on the agenda, all the, all the rifles and all the people are supposed to train on me. It has to be me that gets yelled at, my family will probably be brought into it. But it wasn't me that put this on the agenda. So, I asked, please, if we go through this a third time, that we at least act on it. We cannot keep putting this on the agenda and then taming it or dropping it, it's not fair. So, I asked this person, asking to put it on the agenda, because I'm the one that typed it. I hope that we follow through and do something. Some of the things that we've always concerned about is, the, the mayor sits at the pleasure of the council. They are chosen by the people, as you said, we don't have a strong mayor. And one of the things that Dave Kaiser said the last time this was on the agenda was that he can't, he doesn't have the power outside of a meeting, that he gets all of his power from the council. And that he can't do anything without the consent of the council. So, we've seen him, uh, cancel several meetings in the last couple of weeks without the consent of the council, which shows a very much disrespect to the body. So, that's very concerning to me, I had, uh, an employee from the hardware store tell me just the other day that the mayor was in the hardware store using so much profanity, he F'd words so many times, and he had to be called three times to stop. And yet, he still walked over to somebody and said, "I'm Dave, I'm Big Ding, the effing mayor of Dunsborough." Those kinds of things are very concerning to people. I, well, I, I think it's great that he started this derby class thing a couple of years ago, long before he was on the council or mayor. Now, whether he's mayor or not, I, I assume he will continue, um, helping kick the derby class. Whether he's the mayor or not, he will probably still get involved in his community. But what his role is as mayor, if we, if we so choose, is to run the meetings fairly and to, and to respect the body. And that's some of the things I haven't seen from him. And this cancellation of meetings lately, it wouldn't be possible if we had a different mayor. They would have convened a meeting, we would have either discussed moving it to the community center, or calling another special meeting, or finding a way to get through it. But, but Dave Kaiser has, has made no secret of the fact that he does not want this body to have any more meetings. But he believes he's in the minority, and that the only way he wants to address the fact that he's in a minority on the council is to stop the meetings from occurring. And I've been in the minority plenty of times, I spent all last summer on being a minority. All you can do is make your arguments, and you call for a vote, and you live to vote another day. But Dave Kaiser seems like he can't live with, with being in the minority. So, he's gonna conspire to, to close the meetings, to prevent us from either having the community center or having the council chambers. And I also cut pasted your comments from Facebook, or some comments from Facebook, including former, uh, fellow Chris Rainey, crowding about the fact that they stacked the meeting, we, we plugged up the hallway and the, and the council chambers so that they had to cancel the meeting. Didn't have to cancel the meeting, the mayor chose to cancel the, cancel the meeting. And those kinds of things are concerning. So, when he, when the Brown Act was put this on the agenda, I hope that we discuss it, and and there's no reason that Dave Kaiser can't still be in the council, I'm just saying, I don't know that he's the best person to represent us as mayor.
Response to that, I know you can. To cancel all these meetings requires a vote. Hold on just a second, I'll get a mic. Um, I left me in the works, there's a letter of censure that I recently responded to. Cancel regular meetings which have caused these special meetings, which caused that letter from the district attorney, which says to stop giving us. This is only gonna stop if we can be ensured that we're having regular meetings. It's not just that he said those things about many pages ago. It's the other thing he said about, that he was, he did agree that there was affection in the community that was pleased at this affluence of residents. And just proved that we not having these meetings properly. And that he agreed with us. And that's not right. It's not okay. The district attorney just wrote that letter, and said, "Stop having these special meetings." What recourse is there other than special meetings? If every regular meeting is canceled?
I want, I want, sir, point of order, I wanna make sure you understand what that letter is all about. I don't think you have understood what you just received. A special meeting on January 5th was called by you three. It was called by you three, not by the mayor.
That's not all that you said.
All I'm saying is, that the letter says that the January meeting was a special meeting that was not properly noticed. You three called it, you are on, the three of you are on the hook, that's what the letter from the district attorney tells you.
Okay, um, I'll be quick, well, because I can be, I'm sorry. Candy DePoez, Candy Joffe, and Wade DePoez, 4103, call, well, I'm the Dunsborough. Um, I know that the meetings, some of the meetings that were canceled, it wasn't that Mr. Kaiser canceled them. The fire marshal canceled them because there was too many people there. And he's not the right to do that. We will continue to be here until we are listened to. Mr. Kaiser didn't make that decision, he had the unfortunate case to, to make the announcement, but it wasn't him deciding. That needs to be understood. Okay.
And it's a simple remedy, but this is, he's not the man to reflect, and I know that, that if the next council meeting, if the council chamber, council chambers, should be overcrowded, then we're not having to re-host, should we continue on over to the, um, a public place, so it can be, you know? Well, why not?
Common sense would tell you to schedule one at the community center for a while until the population goes down.
Could be natural, but for right now, yes.
My name is Lynn Nace, I sit by 607, so I'm not really around here, you don't need it.
Can't hear what that they're saying.
He's on, um, first of all. This is proper way to meet, because it's Tuesday, right? But, I'm gonna draw the clock. But also, but, um, I said I wanna, I wanna go ahead and move the other items forward to a regular meeting, after you read that letter. I think it would be appropriate. There's not an item we're handling right now, um... That's what we said, I don't know what it is. The council, the council can schedule regular meetings. So you need a motion to do that, and you need to put the brief to do it immediately. It's...
Can I make, uh, one suggestion?
Yes.
We're only a week and a half away from recall. The whole city council could change in the way things happen. I think in the fairness of Big Ding, the fact that he's not here, and he's out supporting the kids in our community, that the right thing for you people to do is to table this conduct of mayor till after the recall, as Steve Watt, the newly-elected, uh, council member, thinks of your decision. Whoever is made mayor, if you do it now, could end up being the shortest-lived mayor in the history of Dunsmere, because it could all change in a week and a half. That's all I can say.
Left me an alert, Sergeant. That, that letter has to be responded to. What guarantee do I have? Like, schedule, reschedule a regular meeting like if there ever is a... Look up the process of procedure, I believe it says something, so cancel the meeting and sort of next regularly schedule? Put it on the table.
I cannot hear you.
Not a threat. Even if I, even if there are fifty percent plus one vote for recall, it, it won't be effective immediately. The election won't be certified till the end of June.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Pro, Mayor Proten. I believe that Brenda sent you an email stating that she recommended that the future regular meetings be scheduled at the community center until the crowds, uh, die down. So it's not just a matter of selecting a date and having a good agenda and following that agenda, it's also selecting a place where people can entertain. Thank you.
Fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proten, for coming up. Uh, Brenda Baines has officially, uh, communicated with me that she intends to schedule all these meetings at the community center. So that we can go forward. The code, the code says...
He's saying, he's going to say that this, this issue has to be...
Second that motion, but the one's on today. The motion is to reschedule the last canceled regular meeting. Reschedule to the, uh, the time before the... It'd be rescheduled to Wednesday. This would be a regular meeting. For three days, I don't know. January, three, four. This is a reschedule.
You're rescheduling a special meeting?
No.
The next regular meeting...
So first, I need the, um, balance of the items to go forward to the next meeting, which will be a regular meeting that has been rescheduled in the last council, regular meeting rescheduled to the day of Thursday, the twenty ninth, uh, yeah? At six P M.
Excuse me, Mayor Proten. Uh, the gathering through the closed session also? Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, before, before we adjourn, yeah, I give you a comment on the, the special closed session. Okay, this is a three-minute summary of a letter that I gave to council members. I could not be out as a private citizen. I could not discuss the letter. It was simply delivered here. Uh, it's a testimony that was given to the council on the twenty-first of May. I request that, among other things, that my letter be read into the record during both Miss Bing's disciplinary closed session and during open session with the public. I delivered that letter with no additional discussion, as I said, as it is my right as a private citizen. The subject of my letter concerns the council's complaint against our city manager title, adverse personnel action, city manager discipline. It's a public record. It's out there on our website. Without anybody being able to come to write the offense. I bring to your attention and the attention of the Dunsmere City Council an error in that document so grave as to rise to the level of falsehood. His falsehood brings into focus the potential of other grave errors that may contain, contain the housewreck in this document and compels minority of the reaction event surrounding what can only be a false accusation of an honorable public official. And I'm referring to the fifth paragraph on the first page. It's the fifth block. That's of the complaint. It is true that I am the treasurer for the city of Dunsmere. Nevertheless, my political actions at all times have been scrupulously kept separate from my duties and responsibilities performed on behalf of the city and the citizens of Dunsmere with regard to city finances. I was exercising my rights as an American citizen and Dunsmere registered voter when I circulated the referendum against an ordinance, medical marijuana cultivation. My personal research found that the referendum petition process is near the Siskiyou County. Therefore, my reliance rests exclusively on the election code, my common sense, and a binding hand from a friend who is involved in city attorney work. To avoid compromising the council during that referendum process with potential FPPC or Brown Act violation, a corresponding letter was not sent to me, nor did I inform the city manager Brenda Baines, as that board point said. I am sorry, there is no mandate to do so. Please note that copies of my letters to Kathy Goss and the city clerk that I did not copy to the city manager or any member of the council set his games without the office at the time, I had no opportunity to mention it to her. The referendum petition against the repeal of outdoor cultivation of marijuana was circulated from the thirteenth of March to the thirty, uh, excuse me, to the third of April, with many registered voters volunteering to assist. One such individual, Mario Rivera, desired to circulate a separate referendum petition against the city attorney's contract that intercalating and illegally conferred authorities granted by the city ordinance to the city manager and put them on the city attorney. And that compensation to Mr. Hicks was at a rate that was distinctly irresponsible. We met jointly, that's Mr. Rivera and I, met jointly with Miss Bing to receive verification of our petition signatures from Colleen Sixto, and that was, I believe, on the twenty-first of April. During the subsequent council meeting on the twenty-fifth of April, Miss Bing answered city council members' interrogations truthfully and accurately. That is, she could not have informed the council of the status of our petitions ahead of time, and indeed, she was under no obligation to do so. I declare that I am a registered voter of the city of Dunsmere in Siskiyou County, California. I declare under penalty of curdery, under the laws of the state of California, that what I've said is true and accurate. Thank you.
We provide a letter, a copy of that sworn letter to them.
The copy of this sworn letter is in the hands of the clerk, as well as the memo with the body of my, uh, letter that I gave to Mr. Hicks at the twenty-first of May meeting. Also, um, I believe that it's public record. It was given to... I'll, I'll give it to the newspaper if you want a more public. Thank you.
Look at copies, and if you consider, if you provide the, um, the, um, schedule of respective views that I gave you, that is, that is, that is, I believe. If you have possible views for two years, it's, it's, sadly, from the first week. Yeah, I want to, if we all have a public one. Should we consider those things in your letter? Maybe pick this man, and I got a regular meeting. He told me to make something clear, and I will, and then we're gonna adjourn. That these matters, after reading that letter, I believe, are to be taken up at a regular meeting. Our next meeting will be a rescheduled regular meeting, dated by date. At this time, we will take these items up as old business, continue working that thought, and deal with the others throughout that agenda. It's a call, and then we'll arrive. Is that clear, Lieutenant? Thank you. I move this meeting now to adjourn. Yes. That the remainder of the items be tabled all right together with... Yes, I'm sorry. Just the, um, the motion is that the schedule, add a motion that these items be tabled forward to that meeting. A meeting by meeting, I suppose, you know. I call a vote.